All right, we're talking with Jeb Smith, his county commission candidate for district. I've been writing these school board things in the district quarters and district ones. From Hastings.
That's it.
From Hastings. Jeb, if you don't mind, what we'd like to do first is just to let you, if you wouldn't mind just saying, who you are, where you're from, whatever, about that, and then if you want to kind of roll into why you're here, why you're looking for this job.
Well, sure, no time limits.
No, you just go.
You can cut me off any time that big hook will work. When it says, oh, wait, you've got to go to another tape, we're in trouble. I'm Jeb Smith, I'm from Hastings, born and reared here, actually born right down the road, Old St. Augustine General Hospital. My family's been farming in St. John's County since 1921. My mom aside was here since 1915, had a granddaddy born about two miles down the other way on 36 Rodeo Avenue. So, we've been here a while. I was born here, raised here, I went to school here, been in the school system here, from Hastings to St. Augustine High School, and that's where I graduated from. There are three things I usually, and I'm about tired of repeating them, but y'all haven't been at any of those places, so it's just fresh to you. There are three things I used to describe me, they're my faith, my family, and my farm. I'm a devout Christian, I pastor a little church in Hastings, church that I started in January 2nd, 2005. After I'd been to University of Florida for a little while, I ended up going off to Bible school, so I've taught in seminary and been involved in that, but my family's number two on my list. Been married to my wife Wendy over 20 years. We met through 4H, which is an interesting thing as well, through an ag program. Went off to University of Florida, she and I got to know each other there, and then I got married my sophomore year. So, I've been married since I was 19 years old, and been very, very blessed. We have four children, arranging an age from 18 down to 13. We homeschool our kids, but that's something we decided to do before we even got married. So, Wendy's been very, very involved in that. There are four generations on our farm today, and the same, within a half a mile, it wouldn't take long, you can be introduced to generationally Smiths that have been there. My granddaddy's 92, just saw him before I got here, just said hi on the way out, and then my dad, and then my family, they're together. So, that's a unique thing about us, is we're very, very close as a family, so.
Is your dad still preaching?
Dad goes to church with us, I'm his pastor, so.
He was, he's a pastor.
He did, he had a little church, home church, he didn't get along with anybody, so he came off.
I met him, he was a pastor of church from Hastings and a gun dealer. He's still a gun dealer.
He was a pastor when he was young.
He's got a gun shop, yeah, at the farm. He's a preacher and a gun dealer.
My dad, he came to know the Lord early, right before I was born, and so it had a profound impact upon me. But, we worked together and farmed together, but what's really interesting, we went to church here in St. Augustine for 10 years, and then that church disbanded, and when it did, we didn't have any place to go. We ended up coming down the road at US 1 South, it was independent Bible church at the time, but it took about two years. But, growing up there, you know, my dad was very entrenched in that church, and it was very important to our lives, but he didn't get out and about a whole lot more. So, for me, it was a big part of my life growing up, and I came to know the Lord, and that's an integral part of my person and who I am. But, so is my family, and so is my farm, and Dad and I, we worked together, and working with family can be a good thing, it can be a bad thing, but ultimately, in the long run, it can be a good thing. Dad and I don't always see eye to eye, but in that little church of 10 years, that he'd been there, that was his pastor, he died of brain cancer. Dad's been in our church, probably about a year after we started, he started coming, so about nine years, eight and a half years. But, the thing was really special to me, is one day he said, you know, he was introducing me, and he said, this is my son, and he's my pastor. And it just, it crushed me, because that was a big part for him, I was never in that position, but it's changed and altered. But then we worked together too, and even through this campaign process, it's been nice to have family that's been able to help and assist, and we're not as intense as we used to be. We used to be a potato operation, which is extremely intense from January to June, and there's no way I could run for this particular office if I had not, if we weren't in potatoes anymore. But, we're in cattle, hay, sod, fish, vegetables, really small vegetable deal, and some timber. But, cattle and hay are really where our focus is now, and some sod, so. But, with that in mind, he's able to take care of things while I'm able to traipse the countryside, so it's been a very, very nice thing to have him to back it up. Plus, my boys are old enough, they can handle a lot of it as well. I got into this because of my involvement in agriculture. I'm a county farm bureau president, I sit on our state board as well, I've sit on several advisory committees with the Ag Center. I've held, been a Farm Service Agency Commissioner for a while, actually till I term limited out, three three-year terms, and then ended up Hastings Drainage District too. With all those things, recognizing that as a businessman, and in this community, the impact that we have in regard to regulation and taxation, and certain things we have to deal with as a business, got me very involved with the farm bureau in policy development. Well, involved in policy development, we were engaged with, from county commissioners on up to state representatives, and been in DC with congressmen and senators on numerous occasions as well. Engaged in political activity and making sure that our industry was, had the best interest at hand, which allowed us the opportunity to meet a lot of different people. One of my daughters had actually written a speech one time, it was kind of funny, because she was, at the time, there was a Tropicana speech contest here, so she was in sixth grade, and her title of her speech was, or she began her speech, I don't remember what title of it was, but she says, what do Adam Putnam, Rick Scott, Jeff Outwater, Pam Bondi, John Thrasher, Ron DeSantis, all have in common? And, well, they're involved in government, but she says, well, they all know me. And it was kind of cute, because she'd been with us so many different places, that she, they had come to know her, or at least engaged with her, and she felt like they knew her anyway. So, they've been alongside of us as well, our family's been together for all that time, and they've been engaged in political activity, and recognizing the importance and the adverse effects upon us in our business. I didn't really have a lot of ambition toward being involved in another, in an elected position, but I was asked to last summer, if somebody said, Jeb, would you consider running? And I said, certainly I'd consider, but it's going to take time, and I want to seek counsel and make sure that this is a wise thing to engage in, and what am I getting into? Which, I didn't realize till about this point, I still don't realize what I've gotten into. But, we're, it's been an educational process, to say the least, but when I began to ask and inquire of different individuals, they were, Jeb, especially from our agricultural side, they said, you know, we need somebody to stand in our place and take it, and, you know, they recognized too, that I'm not as intense as I was with potatoes, that I could do something like that. So, they were extremely encouraging. And I said, well, I better get outside of that box, because that little realm may get me in trouble. So, I began to seek counsel from others in St. Augustine, and Ponte Vedra, and other places that I had folks that knew me, and would they be supportive, or what do they think? And everybody agreed that it was a wise thing to engage with, so. So, after that, we began this venture, and it is a, it has been, I thought I was naive to begin with, I thought I was ignorant and lacking in knowledge, but now I know it. It has been a learning process, and I tell you, it's been a sweet one. We, my family, with those four children and my wife, we've knocked on over 6,000 doors in St. John's County. I have run into my former fifth grade teacher, high school teachers and coaches, classmates and friends, that I hadn't been engaged with, and some of them for decades, and that has been a really, really rewarding thing, to actually reunite with some folks along the way, it's been very, very fun.
And you counted, you and your wife, is this your wife's kids, or just going out together?
Yep.
But, you've been 6,000 doors?
Yep, we've done it, we've got a little program where we've hit primary, what we call Republican primary super voters. They voted two out of the last three times, which this is, will be going to be decided in a Republican primary, and we've hit those 6,000 of the, there were about 15, a little over 15,000, about 15,200 and something, and we've hit 6,000 of those doors. I'll tell you what's really, really neat, even today, I got a check from one that we just knocked on their door last weekend, I got a check, an in-kind contribution from a guy that I knocked on his door, talked to him, and it'll make me just break down, because it was, it's, it was sweet. I mean, the guy, just today, wrote me in the mail, said, Jeb, I want to give you this in-kind contribution to a particular thing that he could offer to us, and best wishes, and good luck, and, you know, it's just been, it's been very engaging. There've been places that, you know, I was raised here, and there've been places I haven't been since they've been grown up or developed, so been able to be in some of those neighborhoods, meet some really interesting people, and my kids have been a huge help, my wife's been a huge supporter. It's been a lot of fun, been a lot of fun.
So, if you're elected, what would be the top thing that you would hope to accomplish?
There's several things along the way, I think, that, well, you asked what would be the top thing, that's important. I would like to see our county not accrue any more debt. I'd like to see an expedient reconciliation of what we do have, but let me preface that by saying this, that in my own personal life, especially in agriculture, I know what it's like to go borrow in excess of a million dollars and throw it in the ground and hope for a return on investment. I've also been under that kind of stress, knowing that I just had four inches of rain, and I might not be able to make that note payment. I had, when Wendy and I got married, she didn't realize what we were getting into, she really, you talk about naive and ignorant, she didn't know what it was to like to farm, because we didn't get a weekly check or a monthly check. We might get a check at the end of the year, in fact, some years we've been married, we didn't get a check, and we actually lived on our savings in order to survive. So, debt to me is very, very personal. At this point now, at one point in my life, I had a lot of debt, and today I have zero debt. Personally, in my business, I just, our county farm bureau, we just, through some very good leadership within that organization, a good board, and a very good agent, we were able to pull it through and have no debt. Our church has no debt, our state farm bureau has no debt. I just, I feel it to be compulsory for our progeny to leave a debt-free environment, and I just believe very strongly in that. Now, being a county commissioner, you know, you're one of five, but I have a desire not to push us any further into that realm. So, if there's one thing I'd like to see us not garner anymore, and I'd like to see us expedite that reconciliation, if it's possible.
Have you been to a lot of county commission meetings? Have you been keeping up with what's gone? Is there anything in the last six or nine months that they've done that you would have done differently? I mean, dramatically differently?
You know, we have, I would say, and I want to be complimentary to it, we have a good commission, and we've been through some, and I have been to some via the videos, not in person, it's oftentimes very difficult. My family's actually able to go a lot more frequently than myself. But, what happens is, when you're engaged in, we have a good commission, we have a commission that's done a good job, especially coming through and out of a recession, they've done an admirable job. Would I do things dramatically different? I think there's some things that I would definitely perceive that could be addressed in different manners, from a different perspective. Would it actually be handled different? I don't, I would not say that necessarily would be radically different. You know, in our county, we have a pretty large budget, and a lot of services that are offered to the folks in this county, and I think everybody's satisfied with that. I don't think there's, there may be some fringe groups that either way might be extreme, but I don't, I don't think that we need to be radical in any direction. I think we're keeping our mileage where it is, and allowing our budget to increase along with our property values, it's not a bad thing, I think it's a healthy thing. Folks don't need another burden of taxing, and I'm definitely for lower taxes and lower regulations.
So, you're not for the 1 cent sales tax increase?
No, ma'am.
Would you be in favor of voting to put it on the ballot, to let the voters decide?
You know, that's, we've done that before, and it's been shot down, and I think that's the way it should be done. If there's, needs to be a referendum to allow the voters to choose, I think that's the way, that is the only way it can be handled, and ultimately, we'll come down to it, absolutely.
But, as a resident and a taxpayer, you would not vote to support it?
No, ma'am. And I would like to say why, because I think that's important as well. There are 12 counties in the state of Florida that have a 6% sales tax. Here, with our economies being so intense with tourism, and likewise in agriculture, especially from a sod industry, we have to, we have to charge sales tax. Let me just take it to the agricultural side, my side, one that I'm extremely familiar with. A 1% sales tax would put us at a competitive disadvantage to South Florida grass. It already is, we're already at a disadvantage. We're fighting against a premier product coming off the muck, which is a, which is a lot smaller root zone, it's a lot lighter, you're able to put more on a pallet and ship it a lot, a lot cheaper than we can actually take it from here to Jacksonville. A 1% sales tax would put us at an even greater disadvantage. One thing that's a benefit to us is that oftentimes, that muck sod doesn't take as well to sand bay sod, so. But, if they can put 500 square feet on the ground compared to 450 square feet on the ground, and then have 10% reduction in capability of it taking, they can take the risk, especially if it's at a lower price. It just puts us at a disadvantage. I look at being at 6% as an advantage to our businesses, and especially in tourism. I think that it gives us a little leg up, a little competitive edge, and I would hate to jeopardize that for sake of, you know, just a little, we're looking at maybe a $21, $22 million increase in budget contribution. So, to me, it's a competitive thing, it's a business decision, and I think that, I think we get more with having it at 6%, then I think we might even see a little reduction in usage. You know, if you take away that 1%, it's easier to go across the county line, and with no conscience in regard to it. My brother lives in Putnam County, one of them does, he lives just a little ways from the house. He just bought a vehicle, it made a difference where he bought the vehicle in regard to sales tax. And, he ended up buying, he didn't buy in St. John's County, he ended up buying in another county, which was 6% sales tax, so. It's just a big difference for him, it was a couple hundred, $300, it was a big deal.
So, how does the county continue to provide the quality of life it does, and balance everything with all the growth, and pay for everything, and not go into debt?
You know, that's, it's a balance. What, you know, when you have a growing base of residents, it's very easy to recognize that residents, our residential growth is not going to be sustainable in regard to its contribution tax-wise. The, in order to assure or ensure that capability, in order to continue to grow and maintain what we have, we have to grow our commercial business. And there are four different types of businesses in St. John's County. There are old ones that have been here for generations, or decades, or expansive time. There are new ones that have just come, which we've seen a growth in that. We see production-oriented business, and then service-oriented business. I, let me just throw out, and again, another one that I'm quite familiar with, and being a farmer. You know, in 1991, there were over 90 potato growers in the St. John's County, actually in the Tri-County agricultural area. In 1971, when my dad graduated from college and came home, there were 372. So, it's 372 to 91. In 1995, we had 35,000 acres of potatoes alone in the Tri-County area, not all in St. John's County, but in the Tri-County agricultural area. I won't take a guess at what we have today.
16.
You're real close, 21, the last I counted, and we're reduced, we have 16,000 acres of potatoes left. That's a production-oriented business that has faced a lot of adversity, not only from regulation from the federal government, and taxation, and low market prices, and estate taxes, and other things that have come down the pipe, but you look at the residential areas that have been developed as a result of family farms having faced a heavy rain and lost a potato crop. Mirabella would not be where it is had the Robinsons not had a disaster in 1997. The Troy Masters and Weedman Farms would still be, there would not be a, I can't think of what they call that little area across from them now, over near Silo Road, that wouldn't have been developed had they been able to stay sustainable in agriculture. That's a production-oriented business that needs attention, and I'm talking of tension from an expansive government that says, you know what, we need that economic value here. If not, the contribution of that dollar is greater than what it receives in services. So, what we pay in added alarm taxes, what we pay in sales tax on some of those items, what we pay in tangible personal property tax, what we pay in what we purchase, and what we contribute to the economy is greater than what we receive back. That needs to be protected. If not, we're going to end up increasing rapidly and exponentially that residential growth. The number one thing that you can do is go in the middle of a potato farm, and it's real nice to develop. It drains, it has good infrastructure around it, it's dry ground, and just, all you do is plant trees, you don't have to cut them down. It's, it is a tremendous benefit to a developer.
Plant the Yankees.
You can plant, and I try to be very tactful with those kind of things, that's exactly what it is. You go around, and the thing is, you plant one, they bring more. Now, it's amazing to me that we have not had the rapid growth here prior to recent, because, you know, we are the oldest European settlement on this continent, and yet we've remained very, very slow in that kind of growth. But, in order to grow, we have to have a, and I know it's almost like it's cliche now, but we have to develop our business, and we have to unleash the capability of our entrenched business here to be able to succeed. I've told it on many occasions now, but I have a business and a friend that, a family that would love to be able to build a building and increase their business, but because of impact fees and demands, mandates from FDOT studies, it's cost prohibitive. So, they can't grow their business, and they're here, and yet we'll give incentives for others to come in and do very similar jobs, and give them a tax break, and give them incentive. So, I believe that there's, it's compulsory for us to take care of who we have in existing business, to reduce our regulation, our taxation, and streamline our bureaucracy, and give us an opportunity to compete, and compete strongly. And then, there is no problem at all maintaining what we have by quality of life. If we don't, that quality of life is going to be diminished. I tell you, and two, if you focus on production-oriented business, you bring in production, that which is making something from raw materials, then service-oriented businesses will surround it. I just take for example, and I know it's across the line, and it's across the river, but you take GP out of Putnam County, it dies. Your school system dies, your lawyers have to go away, your doctor's no longer there, your everything, that community completely dissolves except for growing trees and potatoes. The fishing industry's dried up and gone away, et cetera, there's nothing there that'll sustain them. Yeah, they have Seminole down the road, but it's not, it's not near what GP is in Putnam County. Here, we don't have, we're more diverse, we have some tremendous production-oriented businesses here that people don't even know about. And I've met some of those businessmen, and I tell you what, they're ready to grow, and a lot of them are, but the economy's in a lull, and things aren't necessarily conducive for them to grow, but there are folks here, and there's reasons why they have moved here. And I believe that it's very, very, very easy to attract, but also to encourage what is existing. And I think priority number one is production-oriented, existing businesses, second is production-oriented, new businesses, and then those service-oriented businesses will surround them, and we can enjoy a growth, a rapid growth. I know that was long, but I hope I answered your question.
One of the questions that knows, you want to come up, and especially since you do put so much emphasis on the farm.
Sure.
And it may be easier not doing potatoes?
Yeah.
And I saw you guys, what, about eight years ago, when you lost 25 pounds or something during the potato season?
Oh, yeah, we had really stressful years.
Yeah, that was about, they were working 16 hours a day. But, you are that committed to your family, you are that committed to the farm, and can you commit the time to the county? Because, I mean, almost anyone agrees that it's a full-time job, and I can't, it's hard for me to see you off the farm and over in the, you know, doing the things that county commissioners have to do.
Sure. Now, that's been a question that's been asked of me, even of some of my closest people that recognize and know me, but they also know me too. And even my brother, one of my baby brothers asked me, he said, Jeb, how are you going to do this? You know, you've got so much committed to. I said, you know what, have you ever seen a lazy person do anything and get it accomplished? And he said, no, he said, that's why I'm afraid you'll just take on something else and take on something else. But, that's why, even in this position, that I believe it's imperative for us to have a good representative, and I think it's worth my time. I tell you, it's easy, it's very easy, some of those things can be adapted. I've got two boys that are very capable of helping me. In fact, our business has, I've actually ended up with more passive income of late, because I've rented out a lot of our ground. I have sod operation that's actually, now, all I'm in charge of, all I've got to do is produce, they cut, so it has been a reduction in responsibility, and that's why I'm able to do this, and it's not been a detrimental thing. Our cattle operation, although I'd like to be engaged in campaign activities Sunday afternoon after church, but I have to pen some cows on Sunday afternoon, and my family will be helping us with that, and we'll be hauling a few, which they're, they're really, really nice priced right now. It makes it a whole lot easier to take a little time and do it. It, it's a, it's a good, valid, pertinent question, but it is absolutely no problem. In fact, I'm going to tell you this too, there's compensation as being a county commissioner, which in the past was not, that'll have to be used to hire somebody to help me on the farm as well. So, that, it's not, this is just a transition for us to be able to accommodate a different task, but I think one that's necessary for us as an area as well. I don't believe that I'm taking on anymore, I'm going to have to relinquish some of those duties, but I have people that are willing to do that.
Do you have any aspirations, because it's your district, do you see any way you'd want to get involved more, or get Hastings more involved with the county, or just in a general direction?
Oh, sure. That, you know, that's another good question. You know, when my mama's daddy was born here in 1915, Hastings was a thriving metropolis. My daddy's daddy, at three months of age, came to live here, it was a thriving metropolis. You know, we had, we had, it was the second largest township in the county. We lost that during the depression, and it continued to diminish even into the 60s. Although, in the 60s, I mean, it was still thriving, we had two high schools. Now, there was integration, but there were two high schools, and there were only four high schools in the county. You had Catalinas, Murray, Harris, and Hastings, and it had a thriving population. We've seen it die, in the 1980s, we had the fire in downtown, and that just about wiped us on out. We were, I was sitting in a meeting prior to coming here with some farmers on ag issues, we have some things that we're trying to address as a group, and one of them said, you know, Jeb, we need to, we need to vitalize, revitalize Hastings, and what can we do to do that? And we'd like to use and help and find assistance with University of Florida through IFIS, to find something that we can maybe put there, whether it be a processing facility, or something that could vertically integrate to accommodate the already established business. There was talk, and has been some interest, in maybe an ethanol plant for additional commercial business, production-oriented, that would help our agriculture to survive, and take it off the docket list for a developer to purchase. We'll need a critical mass, there's opportunity there. And, you know, there's some things on the table that could be very, very viable, and that could revitalize an entire community. Is it going to be dramatic? Not like it was in the 20s, not like it was in the 50s, but there's some things I believe that could be done. Is that going to be a focus? It's going to be definitely a desire, I'd love to see it, but that may be a.
Is that actually something that's possible?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
You know, about stuff sprouting out around it, you will need to, you can see a lot of potato acreage, you see a lot of corn acreage, silage.
Well, you, what, think about some of the, that's an interesting question, because when you're talking about either ethanol production, even that was not going to be domesticated, that was going to be shipped overseas, in some of what we've actually seen, but you're looking at, you have to use some higher sugar contented product in order to accommodate the actual benefit from an economic standpoint. So, you're looking at maybe even a summertime cover crop that can utilize water to, and not be as sensitive to drowning and being waterlogged, and using some byproducts from the industry. That's where you end up with dramatic increases. What you do is, some of these sweet sorghums that are out there and available, which cattle would love to have rather than squeeze it, but then you end up, that's the beauty of it, you end up squeezing these. You end up with squeezing these sweet sorghums grown in the summertime in Hastings. You can extract that, use it for ethanol and then take the byproduct, use it as cow feed and sell it for it. You end up with tremendous, now horizontally but vertically integrated industry. The cost is, the upfront infrastructure costs are extraordinary. You have to have consistency. You're going to have to have something else to be bringing in there during an off time. Those are things that have to be worked out. And that's where it takes somebody with a lot bigger grasp of the logistical part of it and the economical side of it, outside of this small and sometimes limited, very limited capability in this brain. And that's where I think some of those people at IFIS and University of Florida can help and assist us. They've been working on some of it, but in order to accommodate the industry that's already here and help it to survive, even in the meeting today it was brought up, this is something we need to look into. And I think it's, I think it's a reality. Will it come to fruition? We'll have to wait and see, but I think it's something that we can definitely look toward.
What do you mean?
Again, we, in Florida, we're five minutes from a flood and five days from a drought. That's exactly what happened.
Do you think that your opponent's not doing something right, that you do different? Or do you just want to kind of get into the blend? I mean, are there, are there differences?
You know, let me just say this, I must say this about Mr. Sanchez. Mr. Sanchez has been a gentleman to me through this and he's known me since I was born in this world too, and I will have respect for him. And I won't say anything that would demean him in any manner. The only thing that I see that's a distinguishing characteristic between he and I at this point, I'm in business every day right now today and he's been in the county commissioner for eight years. Things have changed radically since he was in the business realm. We have a lot more oversight, even in my participation in business of recent has been dramatic, I would say radical in the last eight years. You know, we, in my business, I've chosen to limit my liability involved in the vegetable industry because of new food safety rules. I mean, you want to go through what EPA has dropped on us and what we're doing with DOT and other things that just within the last few years, even the last year, is radical. And I think that what would distinguish me from him at this point, not to, and I'm not, it's not casting down on him, is that I'm engaged in that right now. And I think after eight years, it's a good thing to be able to come out and get back engaged in reality because you can get in a little bubble and it doesn't matter whether you're in a circle in DC or in a, around people in Tallahassee or even here in the county. We've got, we need some fresh views and fresh personality at our county commission and but I don't, I hope, and please, I don't want to disrespect Mr. Sanchez a bit and I respect him, I appreciate him. And, but I think it's time for some change. And I think even people in the community recognize that. I've talked to people that went to high school with Mr. Sanchez, said, you know what, I've grown up with him, I've voted for him, I've helped him, I've supported him. Jeff, it's time for a change. And, you know, that's not, not a berating thing. It's just the reality. Eight years, I think we need to move on. Am I for term limits? I'd certainly even consider that because I think that it is imperative, and I know I've used that word, you'd probably beat it to death tonight, but it is definitely needed, that we need to go back and go back where we came from and recognize that in order to be effective in any level of government. And I think that's a big difference.
One thing's been said about you coming in, and this is not a personal thing from one camp to the other, just from what you hear a lot, is that the county's going great guns, everything's going well and you or Abel or who else is going to come in and gum up the works? You want to radically change what the county's doing? You want to talk about that?
That is not my position, it has not been my position. Now, I will agree that I'm of a laissez-faire ideology. I believe in less government, limited government. I believe in less taxes and reduced government. But I believe that what we have is an acceptable level of government at this point. My concern is this, and I'm going to say this because I think it's necessary to understand. I'm not griping about my taxes today, but I've met with folks that can't take anymore. We can't increase them. I was with a woman at, in the Hastings area that said, Jeff, I just can't take anymore. We're on fixed income, we're just maxed out. I cannot handle any more taxation. They actually live within Flagler Estates, which is, has its own taxing district as well, and it's a difficult situation. But I'm going to say this too. We're living, we can be living a little precariously because of our, who we are and what we are doing. Let me just say this, if we, we're so dependent upon our ad valorem tax base and an increasing value of our homes, if we see a hiccup in the system where the economy drops dramatically and we're seeing some of that instability right now in the stock market, people might get a little nervous and things might just begin to decline rapidly. Our tax base is going to diminish. That's going to be a radical change. If we have, even if Amendment One passes, which would take doc stamped dollars, 33% if I'm correct, and put them towards removing or purchasing land and taking it off the tax rolls in our state, not just here in St. John's County. But if they're going to go to removing those lands from tax rolls, that could radically change some perception as well and put us in an ad valorem property tax deficit or diminished contribution. Those kind of things could be radical. We have to be proactive and we have to be very, very vigilant and diligent in recognizing that some of these things could happen. If we aren't, if we're not very serious about the way we are spending, we could cost some folks in this county their jobs and that could be a dramatic shift. And I'd hate to put them in a position where they feel like they are, they're comfortable and they're going to maintain a certain position and all of a sudden we have a hiccup and well, we've got to let some more people go. That could be really, really detrimental to them and to us. I think that that's going to take some vigilance and it's going to take some, and if there's a need to come along and to be radical about things, then we're going to have to do, what I've been proponent for is a zero-based budget if that time comes. At Point now, I think we're doing well. But if it comes to it, I believe we're going to have to go where we're going to have to go line item and approve it, not just line item and change and then approve. We're going to have to line item, literally go through our budget line by line and approve it. I know that's a mundane, tedious task, but a zero-based budget is something that we might have to do in order to truthfully analyze where we are. I think that, you know, I can look at a budget and, I mean, you can look at certain things and come up with and deduce a certain rationale. I know some can see inefficiencies, but, you know, those are always going to be the case. I can see them in my own operation and I'm guilty about it too. I can take, man, my fish aren't doing real well, so I'll just say, well, I'll compensate fish costs with cattle costs because cattle are up high. But what it might need, I might just need to cut out fish altogether and let the otters and the alligators and the eagles just have as many as they can, which they're at that point right now. But, you know, it might be sod, I mean, sod's costing me X amount of dollars. We look at it on a line item budget. If fertilizer's here, cost is here, we might just need to put fence posts and barbed wire around it and put cows on it. That might be the best way to handle it rather than continue to have increasing inputs. And a budget here at this level, we have to line item it. That's how we ended up tackling our Farm Bureau county budget and taking us out of debt, was we got very critical on those line items and our whole entire board approved them one at a time. It's tedious, it's mundane, but sometimes it's necessary. I think just an overall cut can get you in trouble. I think, and I'm not talking about trouble politically, I'm talking about trouble as an entity. I think that's an inequitable way to handle it. So I think if there's a need to cut, it has to go to a zero-based budget initiative. And I think that's something that the entire commission would be, would have to be, would be privy to and willing to accomplish. And that is going to take some time and take some effort, but I think it's a way to handle it.
Besides the zero-based budgeting, do you have any other strategies for the debt reduction? Because certainly when you're locked into a finite set of numbers and the growth is only projected to be X number, you're going to have to close that gap or figure out how to make the math work in order to pay down the debt at a rate faster than your spending on other things. So what are your thoughts?
When it comes down to it, and when you look at a rapid expedition of it, you know, we're only limited statutorily, I believe, to a certain amount of, it's a word that I can't even say because oftentimes we live in a deficit, we don't have any reserves. But, you know, we're statutorily, I think it's 10% that you're allowed to have in regard to reserves. So when it comes down to it, there is, there are definite efficiencies that can be in place, implemented to be able to draw down spending. You know, there are so many different ideas that have been implemented along the way, whether it be fuel consumption and efficiencies to cutting back on certain expenditures or, and I'm talking about new equipment. Yeah, it's kind of interesting to me that oftentimes the county has newer tractors than I do in motor roadside. You know, shoot, you know, we live with old tractors. Now, we use them every day too, but I drive a, in fact, my farm truck's a 1992 Ford F-250 diesel. And I, it only has 134,000 miles on it, but that's what I drive because that's what we have and that's what it's paid for. And there are things that can happen as a county that you don't have to have some serious expenditures. And those things can be backed off and you can continue to cut. And I understand there's some that say, yeah, we've cut, we've cut to we can't cut anymore. But there are certain things we're willing to do to accommodate, to maintain people in positions. Another thing that's in their positions in work, that is, you know, there are folks that, in the county, that, well, let me just, the golf course has taken a big hit all along the way. And, you know, I'll be honest with you, I would not have ever voted for the golf course to start with. I didn't believe that's something the government should have been involved in. But we have a golf course and we have, what, 500 and some odd homes around that golf course. And there are people that are concerned about what's going to happen and especially in this, in this political climate, that they're going to privatize or take or sell off that golf course. You know, I sat down with Wes Tucker and I, that guy's, I like him. And I have several friends that live on that golf course. And I'll be honest with you, that golf course is in District Two. And it's, you know, we, you go to looking and analyzing where certain parks are in the county, you know, in District Two, we don't have a high school. We're the only one. We have four parks. One of them's in Vermont Heights, one of them's in downtown Hastings, the other one's Howl Wilkie Field. They're basically swing sets. They aren't plush ball fields. In fact, the Hastings where the kids are playing ball, if it rains like this, they can't play ball. It's underwater on at least one of those little ball fields. So that golf course is a place that I look at as an opportunity for our people to have a certain group of people that can be engaged in an activity. They're generally older, they're generally retired, that generally means are older. But then you have, they're also paying to utilize that facility. That facility has been acting in a deficit, but you know what? I looked at the projections for it. If it hadn't been such a wet winter, they'd have made money this year. But nobody takes into account what that facility brought in from 1989 to 1999 either. And it was a unbelievable enterprise for this county. They were paying $135,000 a year to the county, back to the county, plus had an excess of a million dollars in reserves until they were forced by the county commission to expand the golf course. When they expanded it, depleted their reserves, it put them in a bind and then, as we've been trying to play catch up. But one of those things that was done and done radically there was the handling of staffing and that dropped their budget a lot. Now, some of those same people were moved around inside the county into other different jobs, but they went from 30.6 employees to 6.6 full-time employees. They still have that same amount of employees, but they aren't on the county dole. They're involved from temporary staffing agencies that are staffed there. That radically reduced the budget. Let me tell you how it happened. When the county employee continued to end up with a certain amount of level of seniority, he had a certain amount of time off and obviously he's going to take it when it's most opportune for him. That's generally over a holiday. They bring in a staffing person, there are people going to be playing golf on 4th of July, they're going to be playing golf on Memorial Day and somebody else says, I'm going to the beach or the river or whatever, they're going fishing. But here, he says, well, now we've got a temp guy that's come in to replace them and now they're at time, time and a half and it was killing us, killing that particular entity. So once they were able to reduce that full-time employee status, it radically helped and assisted in their expenditures. Is that how far we've got to go? No, but if there isn't that opportune time where we have to have a radical reduction, I'm not saying it has to happen today because it's not, it's not necessary today. But if there is, that's something definitely, there is a template, there is precedent set that this could work. And that, and everybody has their job, but they have to come off that government, that government salary and benefit in order to have it. I'd hate to have to do that to some folks who've been really, really faithful, but there's sometimes that's what you have to do. I have to do it in private, in private business. In fact, if things have gotten tough, I've had to let people go and it's not a fun thing. And, but I've also too, paid out of my pocket to keep them there too. And my wife said, Jeff, we'll do whatever we can. The guy that works for me now, he's 77 and he's a blessing. He's worked for me for 10 years, 10 years, actually this next week. And I tell folks I could put $1,000 on the shop bench, come back, there'd be 2,000. And he's just, he's a value. Now, is he, is he where he was 10 years ago? No, he's not as fit as he was, he's not as able to contribute, but he's an asset to us and I would, I don't want to lose him. It's my job. And it's my job to go out and find business to make sure and maintain that. In government, you're limited on that contribution basis, so we have to be very careful with it. But there are some folks here that are tremendous assets to this county and I hope we're able to maintain what we have. But it could be, it could end up in a, where you have to make some radical changes. If there are, oftentimes it comes to salaries. You look at what we're paying and it is radical. You look at overtime and things like that, it can be radical. So there's some areas where we can develop efficiencies. We're not there yet. We've been very, very blessed. And I'm going to tell you, as much as folks want to take potshots at this county commission, we have come through some very difficult times and there's some admirable things. And I'm not, there's no need to attack that, they've done a good job. Now, one thing I don't want to do, I definitely don't want to raise taxes. I will, I will say that's just emphatic. I can't, I can't handle it. You know, I was raised up, there are four letter words that I was taught were wrong to say. But now there are three letter words that I teach my kids are wrong to say, tax and fees. A fee, I just can't handle that. It's a tough thing to swallow. So if I know it's hurting me, I know it's hurting others. And I think that we would like to maintain where we are on increasing values and there's opportune time there to do that. But if we end up with a need to cut, we can cut some there, but we're going to have to go equitably. I think the only way to reveal that and where it's needed to be cut is through a zero-based budget.
Do you guys have any comments?
No, but we always ask you to run that time as well. I didn't want to go anywhere near that.
No, I could, I could be here for a while.
I've got an envelope for you.
Is there something that we didn't ask that you want to elaborate on or just end with?
No, I think y'all have been really kind, actually. I think, I was expecting excoriation, tremendous, overbearing, real deep, hard questions, but most of those have been asked in private. You know, it comes down to, I think the biggest thing is, is that what's the worst-case scenario? If we end up in that worst-case scenario where we need to go, we're not in the worst-case scenario, but I can see and I can foresee where we could be. You know, it wouldn't take much where we could end up in this nation with rapid and hyperinflation with other things going on that are so, so very obvious that we could end up with a problem or a challenge. And, but do we need to be reactive? No, but we need to be proactive and look at that. So I think, I think that politically, and I'm not a political animal, but, and in fact, I don't believe that, my ambition is so much to tread upon anybody that's gone before because I think we've done, they've done a good job. And I think that, but there's some distinguishing characteristics that could set us apart. Mr. Sanchez and I don't, we don't think alike. We're very different in our thinking and very different in our philosophy. But he knows that, I know that, and we go with. um, we, we go with that, and, um, I can be a gentleman about it and be kind about it and not, not have to be harsh about it, as some others would like to be, so that's the way we're working.
He did too.
That's good. And I, I tell you, it's, he's been, he's been a gentleman. We, it's my, when I, when I first started, I said, yeah, I said, we're, I decided September 1st last year that I'd run, and, um, my youngest daughter, uh, she, she said, well, Dad, who are you gonna run against? 'Cause they know all the commissioners, they knew everyone, especially through Tropicana speech contest, they've all judged it, they know them. They've shake, they've, they've had their hands shake, they've, they've, uh, they've met them, they know them, in fact, they, they know her. She won the last time she was up there, that was her goal, she got first place. And she says, well, Dad, who are you gonna run against? I said, well, Mr. Sanchez. Well, in their 4-H club, Miss Nettie Ruth Brown's club, Ashley Whibley and, and her brother are his grandchildren. Actually, would be, uh, no, excuse me, they're his in brother-in-law's grandchildren, so, but they're related, and they're like, Dad, you're running against Mr. Sanchez? Yeah, that's what we're gonna do. She says, well, that's my favorite one. And I thought, that's bad now.
Let me get that one down.
It wouldn't hurt my feelings at all.
Good thing she don't get to vote, right?
He said he's got a picture, Trevor, he's doing a bumper sticker.
What's that?
Ron said he's got a picture, your daughter wearing a bumper sticker, that's my favorite one.